Good evening. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, October 14, 2019, at 5:30 PM. We are reconvening back to open session, coming from closed session, and like to report there's no reportable action taken at the closed session.
Did the rest of the audience hear? Did everybody else hear but him?
Yeah.
You got it? All right, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? All right. I'm not talking. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? Jim, can you hear me? Okay.
Maybe can you exchange it?
All right, can you, can you hear me? All right, thank you. All right, we're back on. All right, vocal please.
Mayor Protem Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Mayor Santinas.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Raymond Hamada, and the Pledge of Allegiance is to be led by Jim Del Longa, our Director of Economic Development. Please rise.
Let us pray. Dear Father, again we thank you for this evening given to us to conduct the business of the city. Father, we thank you for the many blessings given to the Bellflower community. Again, Bellflower is truly blessed, and we stand confidently that the best is yet to come. Father, we pour out our prayers to our armed service personnel home, home and abroad, and our first responders. We ask you give them your hedge of protection. Father, we pray on the next steps to address the issues of homelessness and mental health and seek your guidance to serve these populations. Father, we ask for your wisdom and guidance to address the business items on tonight's agenda. Give us the strength and fortitude to boldly move forward. I ask this all in your son's name.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ray and Jim. Let me start with City Council comments. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce will be hosting their 11th Annual Trick or Treat on the Boulevard event on Friday, October 25, in downtown Bellflower. The Trick or Treat portion will be taking place from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. There'll be also music, carnival games, crafts, candy, and much more at the Town Center Plaza. The event is free for children up to 12 years old, and all children must be accompanied by an adult or guardian. For more information, please call (562) 867-1744. Mayor Protem Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Metro will be hosting an update meeting about the West Santa Ana Branch Transit Corridor, a 19-mile light rail transit line that will connect southeast Los Angeles County to downtown Los Angeles. The meeting will be taking place on October 24 from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM here at Sims Park Auditorium. Metro will be providing the latest project updates. You know, let me see if I can talk closer to... You want to try it again? You want to try it? Okay. Do we have another one? What would you like to do, Mr. Mayor? You want to...
Can we put him up in front here?
I think he's completed that.
If he sat up here, would that help you?
You want me to continue, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
So for more information, there are flyers in the council chambers up front if you're interested in attending, as well as on our city website. I also like to point out that if you go onto the Metro website right now, for those of us, those of in the community that were not able to participate in the rail tours that Metro conducted recently, if you want to get an idea as to how it's going to look, if you go on the Metro website right now, you're able to take a pre-recorded recording and be able to see that. The other thing I wanted to do is also thank Metro for continuing these updates. I know that recently we've been informing the community that Metro is coming over and updating the communities on, on the rail project. The reason they're doing that is because the project itself is, is undergoing changes. So I commend them that as these changes are happening, they're coming back and letting the community know. So as you hear more about these, if you're interested, I encourage people to attend these meetings so you can find out what the latest is on this project. So that completes my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Garza. Councilmember Ray Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. The Economic Development Department invites you to their event. It's called Coffee with Jim. Come out and chat with Jim Del Longa, Bellflower's Economic Development Director and city staff about all the city happenings and available programs that we have. Join them on Saturday, October 26, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM at Fantasy Cakes Bakery located at 16527 Bellflower Boulevard. For more information, please call Anika at (804) 1424, extension 2249. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Join the Bellflower City Council and the city of Bellflower in celebrating the grand reopening of the Bellflower Aquatic Center with a ribbon cutting and tour. This event will be taking place on Tuesday, October 29, 2:00 in the afternoon at Thompson Park Aquatic Center. For more information, please call (562) 804-1424, extension 2264. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, volunteers are needed at the Bellflower Volunteer Center. There's a wide range of volunteer opportunities such as assisting at elementary school sites, tutoring, and mentoring programs, and much more. For, for more information, please call (562) 866-2666. See a lot of young recruits in the audience, maybe, so hopefully take that phone number down. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Tonight, we have a declaration to be made, declaring this week as the Red Ribbon Week, and I'd like to invite... Who's going to be receiving the proclamation? Anyone from the school district? Okay, we will present it at an appropriate time. All right, so moving ahead with the presentation from Parks and Recreation on the LEED program, which stands for Leadership Experience and Development. Mr. Melana.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, I have a brief presentation on our Leadership Experience and Development Program, and we have our participants here that participated in the program this past summer and staff members as well. So I'll give a brief presentation, and then I believe the mayor and council are going to take a photo, and we have some certificates for the participants as well. Our LEED program is a free volunteer seven-week job training program. It gives our participants opportunity to gain experience within the Parks and Recreation Department. The participants learn basic job skills, communication skills, and life skills to help these young people succeed after graduating high school. This summer, we had 26 participants that completed and submitted an application before the deadline. 22 applicants participated in group interviews, and 16 applicants were selected based on their performance in the interviews and their application. The LEED participants were scheduled for shifts at both Thompson and Sims Park for a total of over 530 hours. They volunteered at special events for a total of 215 hours. They gained experience while shadowing our current staff members, recreation leaders, during their park shifts. All hours were logged and approved by the park supervisors, and the participants received evaluations at the end of the program based on feedback from recreation leaders and recreation supervisors. During the program, the participants are exposed to different career fields. We had five guest speakers that are experts in areas of education, entrepreneurship, and social work, and they all gave presentations about their careers for, for the participants. Some of the benefits for the LEED program is that it develops the participant's sense of responsibility, communication, and self-awareness, both in their personal and professional lives. It provides volunteer, a volunteer workforce to supplement our staffing levels for the Parks and Recreation Department, and it strengthens and educates the youth within the community to, to become future leaders. A total of 256 classroom hours were completed by the teens, and they developed and learned how to apply those skills that were previously addressed in those classroom hours. The teens interacted with members of the community as well as current Parks and Recreation staff, and they gained firsthand experience in what a daily shift involves for recreation leaders at our parks and at our events. Park shifts and special assignments taught the participants how to become organized, responsible, and resourceful. And one of the last results that we, over the past two years, that we recognize is that this is very helpful to our current staff and their leadership skills, and it strengthens them to be able to teach something that they're already learning and supposed to be implementing as our staff members. Before we get, I got a brief one-minute video here, just some, some photos, but I do also want to acknowledge and thank the staff members that put this together and implement it. Angelica Severs actually started this program two years ago. She was here this year, but she can't be here tonight, so I want to acknowledge her. And Dakota Wallace is here. She can answer any questions, and she helped implement this program as well, and they do an amazing job. And also, we want to thank all the participants as well. So here's a brief video, and then I'll take any, any comments or questions the council may have. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Melana. This is a great program, and I, I'm really glad that our city can continue hosting this program. I just have a couple of questions. Do the students have to be residing in Bellflower or studying in Bellflower? What are the requirements?
I believe it's Bellflower Unified School District students.
Students, okay, okay. And what's the general feedback from the students who've graduated from this program?
We get very positive feedback. We've actually had the opportunity to, to hire several students from the program, and we think moving forward over the years, we'll continue to be able to do that as we hire. So we've, we've opened up another hiring session that we typically do right after the program, as well as our traditional getting, gearing up for our summer hiring. But from what we've heard from the participants, they enjoy the program. You'll see them out at a lot of events. You'll see them here tonight with their big smiles, and they, they seem to enjoy the program.
I think two of them were at the Student Art Festival last Saturday. Is that right, or... Someone was there, right? Okay, I recognize the face. All right, don't be shy. All right, that's all. Thank you. Any question for Mr. Melana?
I just, good work, just a general comment. Just very, very proud of our staff for, you know, for putting this program together. I, I really do think that with programs like this, we build those essential building blocks for our community and our future. To all the participants, you really are our city's future. You are. So to have the best of the best here tonight, and in part of this, it's really very rewarding for us up here as well. So thank you for participating, and, and I encourage you to continue investing in our city. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I think we're going to present them with the certificates. I'd like to invite my fellow council members to the riser. All right, very good. So as I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate. Angel Barbosa. Yay. Congratulations, congratulations, okay. Brian Gallardo. Congratulations. Kalina Hoon. Congratulations. Juan Ponse. Dexter Quintanilla. Karen Ramirez. Congratulations. Stephanie Reyes. Thank you for volunteering last Saturday. Mark Romano. Madeline Suarez. Congratulations. Wendy Villalobos. So we're going to take a group photo here?
Just going to hold you up here so we take a picture. He's in the front row.
We're taller than you.
I'm, I'm, I'm still towing, I'm still towing. As I said that, I was still towing. Hold on. I think you should stay on that side here. You're taller. All right. All right. All right. Very good? Okay. There you go.
The camera can't see you.
I'm still towing here. All right, congratulations. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
There goes the audience for you.
So thank you again to our staff for continuing this program, so I hope that this program continues and grows in the future. All right, our next item is public comments. Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the City Council.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on another agenda item? Please come forward. Please sign in and state your name for the record. John, is the microphone on?
Now it is, I guess.
There you go.
Well, you didn't want to listen to it anyhow. Just two, two little items. I'm glad we're making some headway with this homeless situation, and I'm happy that at least we got somebody on our side for a change. Because it is a, a growing problem, and it's growing much, much more rapidly in Bellflower than it is the surrounding cities. And I think we know our answer to that anyhow, because we got that 70% rental factor here. Nobody wants them in Lakewood, nobody wants them in Saritas, nobody wants them in Downey, but they point where to go, Bellflower. Sheriff does. I know that for a fact. Now, the other part is, hopefully we get this taken care of, but why can't we, with some of these overabundance of homeless here, instead of chasing them around, chasing them out of the park, let's say Sims Park, let's use for an example, and that would be a primary one? Instead of chasing them out of the park and into the neighborhoods, because they're not disturbing anybody sleeping in their vehicle there, and if we have a trash can and we inform them that if you screw this up, you're all going to get thrown out, so they'll monitor it theirself, and if you put a porta potty thing there. Because as you go around the city and you look at these businesses more so than your residential, it's nothing but defecation taken behind the businesses that are closed for the evening. And I'm going to name my own off, too. Because it's terrible for them, thank God they're not just going down the middle of Bellflower Boulevard like the one did, but, but basically, when you got to go to work at your business, and then all of a sudden, you got to clean this mess up. So I think until you get something going with this halfway house, or whatever you want to call it, that you're doing, which is good, that we should look at doing something of that nature, and at least use Sims Park as a starting point. Because you're impacting the business people, not just the neighborhoods. So that is the one thing I wanted to bring up. And the other thing is, we're making headway with, with, with Union Bank, thank goodness. But now, I want to see headway being made after five or six years of me griping on it over this apartment tax, the business license, which is so unjust and so unfair. I've been hammering on this for over six years. Nobody's listening. Nobody cares. Because basically, how do I get reelected to an office? I don't step on the apartment owners. Bologna. $25 was impacted for the units back in the early, mid-1900s. It hasn't been raised since. But you raise the business license on the businessperson, $1 every year, and that's been ongoing for, God, since 1980, I would say, or '85. But the $25 hasn't budged. Look at the millions, and I mean millions of dollars, this city has not collected, let alone the city of Bellflower doesn't even know how many rentals they have. Because nobody's exercised that power to find out, and that's easy enough to go to the county records office. So I would like to finally see something after six, eight years of hammering on this issue, to bring it up, because every apartment unit is a business, and there's no differentiation between that business and my business. I don't do work in Bellflower. Mine's all commercial. Bellflower really doesn't have commercial per se. Plus, they're too cheap here anyhow. So I would like to see that apartment unit, each unit, it's individually, pay the same price that Mr. Dutton pays, Mr. Coops pays, and I pay, along with the other business people in this town. Let's bring fairness to board into play, and it's about time something was done. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Carlos Lozano. Recently, I had a conversation with someone about the diversity in Bellflower. I said to him, I really appreciate Bellflower's diversity. I see it in downtown Bellflower with our restaurants, the French Quarter, Franks, Ricky's, Calaveras, and Belco BBQ. I see it here, looking up at our city council. One place I didn't see this diversity was on our Street Fest stage. Our neighboring cities had their versions of our Street Fest. The city of Downey had R&B, country, and Latin salsa. The city of Paramount had Latin rhythm, country, classic rock, Spanish rock, and Motown. The city of Norwalk had mariachi, old-school, Motown, Latin cumbia, and 80s. The bands we had were classic rock, modern country, Top 40, and 80s. The bands we had were classic rock, modern country, Top 40, and 80s. I attended every street fest this year, and I had a great time. But I think we can do a better job representing Bellflower's diversity through the music, music at the street fest, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council, City Staff, Mayor, and City Council. My name is Robin Snow, and I just want to say, Bellflower runs on Dunkin', the now hiring sign is up, and the lights are on. Exciting.
Thank you, we're excited too. Alright, anyone else? Please come forward.
My name is Jeanette Gosden, good evening, everyone. I have handouts-
Jeanette, could you just sign in, please?
Oh, sure.
For the record.
I think I forgot to once, huh? Somebody came back with a piece of paper and I had to do it post-pact. I have handouts here for the city council, unfortunately, I don't have handouts for everybody, but I've been bird dogging the corner of Somerset and Lake-
Can you speak closer to the microphone? There you go.
I've been bird dogging the corner of Somerset and Lakewood Boulevard. The new car wash. I have several traffic hazards that I have observed and lived through on that corner. They usually occur anytime on Friday, but as the afternoon wears on, they get worse. Traffic gets worse because people are going home. And also, all day Saturday, and their hours on Sunday. The traffic, if you're going northbound on Lakewood Boulevard, like I often do, from coming from the city of Lakewood to get to Somerset and then my home, the cars are backed up for the car wash, all the way around the corner onto Lakewood Boulevard. So there is no right-hand turn lane. People are waiting until the turn signals go, hoping somebody's doing a U-turn, and then dashing around that corner, so that the next car, hopefully, is not making a left up their bumper. Now, that's just one of the problems. The second worst problem of that corner is going eastbound on Somerset before you get to Lakewood Boulevard. There's two lanes of traffic coming that direction, and when their light is green, one of the lanes, one of their lanes is blocked with cars waiting to get into the car wash. So what are they doing? They're merging in the middle of Lakewood Boulevard as best they can. I saw two near misses and one hit, so that wasn't very good. Even coming from, going eastbound on Somerset, not only is there, on Fridays, a crossing guard trying to work that area, because this car wash opens at six, excuse me, seven, he's having to get people past all these cars that are lined up to make a left-hand turn into the car wash. Now, those cars are lined up past his crosswalk, so that's a real hazard. And there's three more that I can point out to you, they're on the map. If you go by the explanations that I've just given you for those, you'll understand. But I don't know who, who did the traffic control before we decided to put a car wash with the entrance right there. I mean, a car wash right there, period, was not a very good idea if it's gonna be popular. If they were gonna charge fifteen dollars, it wouldn't be a problem, nobody'd go there. But it's five dollars, and everybody's going there. So please take that into consideration.
Thank you, Jeanette, for coming. Mr. Stewart, can you have stopped looking at this and work with the property, with the business owner? See how we can alleviate the traffic? Okay, alright, thank you, Jeanette. Anyone else? Okay, moving along, we'll go into, there's no public hearings tonight. Item 12A, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration and possible action to read by title only, wait for the reading, introduce ordinance number 1379, an ordinance amending the Bellflower Municipal Code to regulate the unlawful use of public property. And I believe Ms. Carplus is gonna make staff report for us tonight.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Before you is item 12A, an ordinance amending the Bellflower Municipal Code to regulate the unlawful use of public property in light of the court's ruling in the case of Martin versus the City of Boise, and the city settlement agreement in the case of Orange County Catholic Worker versus Orange County. The proposed ordinance amends certain city regulations, such as unlawful camping, loitering, and conduct on the pedestrian and bike trail, and it deletes the city's chapter on use of public property for residential purposes. The proposed ordinance creates a new chapter entitled unlawful use of public property, and it would prohibit occupancy of a housecar, which is a defined term under the ordinance, sleeping, camping, or storing personal items within restricted public property, and interfering with pedestrian flow or travel. Enforcement of the proposed ordinance would include removal of abandoned property and notice requirements for the recovery of that property. And it would also be pursuant to the provisions stated within the settlement agreement, namely, until such time as the city constructs or cause to be constructed temporary homeless shelters, that the city's enforcement would be as follows. So absent any exigent circumstances, the city's outreach and engagement personnel must first contact the individual and offer the individual a placement in a shelter. If the individual refuses such placement, the city provides a warning and allows the individual an opportunity to voluntarily disperse. And if the individual refuses to disperse, the city may then proceed with enforcement. And enforcement would be subject to the provisions of the settlement agreement, including any type of dispute resolution that is offered thereunder. Violation would have to, would have to amount to an actual obstruction of the use of public property. And the proposed ordinance would not apply to anyone with a valid permit or permission for the use of streets for temporary habitation. So at this time, it is recommended that the council consider and adopt ordinance number 1379 to regulate the unlawful use of public property, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Natalie, I can see that much thought has been put into this proposed ordinance, I really appreciate that. I just have a couple of questions, on the page A6 of the staff report, item 8.50.1, 120A, personal effects. In terms of confiscating the, the effects of the individual, so it mentions about posting a notice, what if the person is present when the item is being removed?
If the person is present, they receive the notice-
So it's gonna be handed out, like a traffic ticket, something like that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and do they have to acknowledge receiving that notice?
No.
They don't, so just hand it to them and we're good to go?
Yes.
Okay. And my second question is on the, on the next page, on item D, the 90-day period, is that by law?
Yes.
So we cannot shorten that?
No.
Okay, so we have to keep the inventory for 90 days?
Yes.
Okay.
That is pursuant to the California Civil Code.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any question of Ms. Carplus?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, quickly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, Natalie, Carl, thank you for your hard work on this, and it covers, it covers it. Just maybe one thing for the benefit of the public, again, we need to provide sufficient beds, so and as part of that settlement agreement, which is, which is an attachment, that number came to 50 beds, and so and that's based on our consultant studying the homeless here in town, CityNet, and that came to about 70, so and a percentage that will probably utilize it, or maybe the maximum probably, came up to that magic number 50, so, just so people get, get that understanding of, you know, what's, what's possible out there, and what's, you know, I mean, what are the limits, so. My, my second comment question in regards to page 8, 8.5.070, this regards to the control of location reserved, so if a place can't be located for this vehicle, then there's a possibility beyond the 300-foot limit, and are these what people would be calling potentially a safe lot type of setup, a safe location? Whatever it may be, whatever term somebody's gonna come up with, and that is possible, so, based on what I read.
The purpose of this provision is to allow for the city manager, is that an additional restriction? If one is necessary for a particular situation?
Yeah, alright, and that, there could be a safe location then to, I mean, to allow it, then permit it to-
Yes.
To park, alright, that's, that's, that's the clarification, so, thank you, Natalie. Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Hamada, Councilmember Coops? You good?
I'm good.
Okay, no questions, alright.
Mayor?
Councilmember, Councilmember Dunn?
You ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
I'd like to make a motion on 12A, and it's gonna read as follows. Read by title only, wait for the reading, and introduce ordinance number 1379, I mean, 1379, an ordinance amending the property, amending the Bellflower Municipal Code to regulate unlawful use of public property.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, and second by Councilmember Hamada, for the City Council of Bellflower to adopt ordinance numbers 1379. Introduce, introduce, right? Introduce 1379, is that the motion? Introduce, okay, alright, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protim Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye.
Item 12B, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration possible action to read by title only, wait for the reading, and introduce ordinance number 1380, an ordinance adding a new chapter, 9.44, to the Bellflower Municipal Code entitled aggressive solicitation. And I believe we have Ms. Carplus again.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Before you is item 12B, an ordinance prohibiting aggressive solicitation. Aggressive solicitation is defined in the ordinance to include unwanted touching, any use of force or intimidation, threats, or blocking or interfering with safe travel or movement upon public property when one is soliciting goods, services, or requesting money. Coupled with this prohibited conduct are certain locations which could trigger or contribute to any type of fear or intimidation when solicitation is involved. For instance, there is a restriction on soliciting near public restrooms, soliciting within 15 feet of an ATM or a bank, and soliciting within any type of public transportation. With regard to enforcement, warnings must first be issued to the individual before any type of citation or further enforcement action is taken. And attempts, I'm sorry, the ordinance would exempt passive solicitation attempts. At this time, it is recommended that the council consider and adopt ordinance number 1380 to prohibit aggressive solicitation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, you're working hard today. Just a couple of questions, on the, the 15 feet from an ATM machine, is that by law, or can we extend it? Can we extend 15 feet?
I believe that it can be extended, we would have to have some type of a justification there for, as long as we can tie it to the purpose of the ordinance. If there would be a justification to extend that distance, we should be able to do it.
Yeah, because I keep thinking of the bank, for example, let's say, we look at, let's say, Chase Bank on Bellflower Boulevard. Usually, the ATM users go in the back, and there's a parking lot. And I've seen panhandlers or solicitors waiting in the parking lot. I think that's beyond 15 feet, because there's an alley.
There's also a provision in the ordinance related to parking lots. So if that's an area for concern, it is, it is addressed by the ordinance, regardless of the distance from the bank entrance.
So it's beyond the 15 feet, okay. So if someone is soliciting within a parking lot, asking for, aggressively asking for money, then that's within the scope of this new ordinance?
That is correct.
Okay, wonderful. And the second question is on the, on the definition of banks, means any member of the Federal Reserve System. I was kind of thinking it should be more proactive, because I'm, I'm thinking that the state of California, one of the states, will, will open state banks, because of the cannabis, okay? So, should we kind of include it now, or, or any future state bank that may be authorized by the state, so that it falls in the definition of bank, or should we come back later on and redefine banks?
My answer-
Okay, I want, I want your answer.
My, my answer would be that because the ordinance can be amended, I would wait until an issue arises that would require a necessary amendment like that. It's, I think it's too difficult, once we start to conceptualize hypothetic, hypothetical situations and try to address those.
Or you can say, or any other government, authorized by the government, I mean, something like that. I, I'm just kind of, I'm just trying to be proactive, instead of coming back later on, because I know it's coming. I mean, state banks are gonna open one of these days. Anyway, alright, so you're comfortable with just holding it up for now, and then come back and make the revision and definition later on?
I would.
Okay, any question for-
Yeah, on another note, I was gonna, you know, throw out the word financial institutions in that blanket of all.
It might.
That might be an idea.
Depending on how the state banks operate.
You got a point.
Alright.
I got some comments there, yeah.
Go ahead, Councilmember Dunn.
Would this ordinance be in effect for private property?
Private property would be governed by the state trespassing laws. So if there are instances where an individual who owns a private business or a residential property could enforce any type of private trespass action, they wouldn't need to rely on the ordinance.
Okay, because you're looking at an ATM, the ATMs are on private property, pretty much, and so I was wondering how you're gonna enforce an ATM? Yeah, okay, and there's other things you had in here. Yeah, I'm thinking of strip centers, gas stations, donut shops, and it's basically, you target is, is a captive audience, so a captive audience if you're pumping gas, a captive audience if you're going in a convenience store. And you, you wrote it that way, and then, you know, how do we, you know, be able to? Because, you know, there's aggressive panhandling going on.
Is the question how we would enforce?
Yeah, I guess we can't go on, you know, that's, the, the business owner has to take actions to control his own panhandling. So what this ordinance is gonna allow.
I think what he's talking about is the differentiation between private property that has public access, and private property necessarily doesn't have public access, and what the differentiation would be.
So if there is access to the public on private property-
As a business, okay.
Yeah, it would be controlled by this ordinance. If there is, for instance, a situation where you have private property on a business, or you have a private residential property, those could be enforced under state law through trespassing.
Okay, so anybody that is, someone, a business is open for any kind of business, even though it's not listed in this ordinance, because there's some of them not listed in this ordinance, you kind of have some can type of businesses listed, but so, if there's aggressive panhandling on, and, and it's noticed by a patrol unit, they could do something about it without getting a permission from the business owner or property owner?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Just kind of piggyback, is the gas station, does that fall under the item Plaza?
Yeah, gas stations aren't in there, is why.
No, because I always kind of think about public place, it includes Plaza. Is that defined as, can that be considered a Plaza?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you look what the definition is, the listing are all examples of what a public place might be. So the first part of the definition says, public place means a place to which the public or a substantial group of persons has access. That's what a public place is. And then it gives examples of different types of places. So the intent is to be, have it broadly applied, as opposed to narrowly applied.
Okay, so these are just examples, so, so the real definition in the first line?
Correct.
Okay.
Excuse, they don't want an excuse from law enforcement not to enter on the property because they think it's private property. They want to make sure that there's broad discretion for law enforcement to enforce these ordinances, right? Is that where I'm reading right, correctly?
I can only answer that question legally, which is there's broad discretion to enter into public places in order to enforce the ordinance. How the sheriff's department actually enforces it, that is a separate question over which I don't have control.
But the answer is, they can enforce it, based on this.
Yes.
Okay. Question, Mayor Protem Garza, are you done? Mr. Dutton?
I'm good, thank you.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One of the things that kept popping in my mind as I was reading this thing was post office, right? But to your point, the definition was really broad, so I thought it's covered, yeah. Yep, so, just a general comment, I thought that item twelve A and twelve B were excellent. And I thought they were really comprehensive, and I just want to commend the both of you. I thought you did an excellent job, so thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you. No question? Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Again, I had the same concerns, but just after hearing it again, I think it's covered. So, again, thank you, Natalie, Carl, for, again, for the hard work.
No, my questions have been answered. I had concerns, just as the other colleagues have, that we all have safe situations where we're uncomfortable in different locations, and we wanted some assurance that that had been dealt with. And I think we're pretty good on, and I appreciate, again, this great report.
Not only uncomfortable, I think sometimes kind of scary, especially if you're getting money from ATM machine at night. I mean, that's really scary.
So don't go there at night.
Well, if you need the money to pay for something, and I'm not as rich as you are. I need cash.
I've never used a machine, I don't know.
Oh, okay, alright. Okay, moving along, okay. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, there's no further questions or comments. I'd like to, I'd like to ask that this council introduce ordinance number thirteen eighty, an ordinance adding a new chapter nine point four four to the Bellflower Municipal Code entitled aggressive solicitation.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Garza, seconded by Councilmember Coops, for the City Council of Bellflower to introduce ordinance one three eight zero. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Garza.
Hi.
Councilmember Dutton.
Hi.
Councilmember Hamada.
Hi.
Councilmember Coops.
Hi.
Mayor Santenaz.
Hi. Item thirteen A, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration possible action to adopt resolution number nineteen dash eighty-two. Declaration of emergency to implement the court order filed September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, in Orange County Catholic Worker at All versus Orange County at All. It's a resolution adopted pursuant to Bellflower Municipal Code BMC, Chapter two point two zero, and Public Contracts Code, Section two zero one six eight, finding that the local emergency exists within the city and authorizing contracting without the need for bidding pursuant to Section two two zero five zero and Bellflower Municipal Code, Section three point two eight point zero seven zero D, and finding that the temporary shelter T S project is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act as an emergency product. And I believe Mr. Berger is here to answer any questions and know where we're going.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the homeless taking care of night. And so lots, much of this flows from the council's leadership with regard to the settlement agreement that was entered into on September twenty-third, which was entered by the court on that same date. So this resolution, if adopted, would give the city manager broad powers in order to bypass bidding requirements, sign contracts, all of course with a practical viewpoint to implement a plan by December thirty-first of this year, which is what the settlement agreement and court order require. This will allow a rapid response to that particular requirement, and will also allow the city council to have an overview of what's occurring on a monthly basis. So you'll read in the resolution that the city manager is required to report back to the city council about what's, what types of actions have been performed in order to implement the plan by the December thirty-first date. I'm happy to answer any questions, but in my view, the court order combined with the need for taking care of the homeless in our jurisdiction merit the adoption of this particular resolution.
Okay, thank you so much for the report. This is badly needed by our city at this time because of the settlement agreement. We are on a very tight deadline of December thirty-first, as you mentioned, so we need to get this going. We cannot afford to go through this bidding process. It's nice to have bidding process, but the circumstances at this point requires us not to do bidding process at this point. My only question here is on the monthly report from the city manager on Section four B. It calls for a monthly report on the progress of the project and accumulated cost. Can we also include sources of funding? Where the money comes from? Okay, so not just the cost, because we're hoping that money will be coming from other sources also. So it would be nice to have a complete picture of the finance situation of the project.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my suggestion would be to add in at the end of Section four B, it currently reads blah blah blah, and the accumulated costs associated with such efforts in addition to the funding sources for paying for those costs.
I would just say accumulated revenues and cost.
Okay.
Make it simple. But this, we know where the money is coming from, okay. Any question?
I believe there's somebody who wants to speak on this item.
Yeah, okay. Hold on first, hold on, City Council first, any other question? You're good?
No questions.
No questions, okay, please come. Public comments, alright, go ahead. Yeah, please, right here.
Boy, am I nervous. I sign in?
Please sign in, state your name.
My name is Dale Hardesty.
Okay, Darrell, take a deep breath and relax, you're okay.
D H A R D E S T Y, like Hardesty with the Y, Hardesty. I went to school with your family members.
Yeah, what school did you go to?
In high school, back then, but anyways.
Alright.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the epidemic issues in our own city in Bellflower. Bellflower, our city. I understand you're adopting a Santa Ana settlement agreement. That's good news if you feel that that's safe for our community as far as other countries. I mean, other counties coming to our city doing what, I went to LA County and saw, what I saw was not cool. I literally was knocked out by M Bell Salvation Army, a shelter there. I just want to give you an idea of what it's like inside there. Their shelter, while I was waiting for my housing the first time around, I was checking to see what time it was at three o'clock, because I had to go to Orange County. From there to there, as I turned to, I had an appointment, I wanted to make sure I was getting ready for the bus. As I turned around, I turned around, went going back to my little cubicle, I, this black guy came up and went bam. I went, I didn't even see that coming. Okay, that's just to give you an idea of what I went through. I figured I'm going to the doctor, please don't do nothing. I'll talk to you when I get back, and they kicked him out. So I didn't feel safe. So the second time around, my case manager now, used to work at the other one in LA County. Thirty-eighth Street, I believe, is called Volunteer America. I cannot hear, there was a glass jar that went psh, right next to my bed. It was the worst thing I've ever seen. I seen a dude die right there. They stabbed his nerve on the right, right of his knee. I'm not lying to you, or you think that that would be a good idea to have Bellflower interchanging with other counties? No, this is our problem. We need to work with our own issues. We want to protect the citizens down the street. We want them to feel comfortable. And I have a proposal for you to maybe just, you know, think it over as far as, it's not, the homeless will not be in the sight of the beautiful work you guys are doing. I just want to hand that to you. My proposal is where I used to work is Kmart. Kmart is over there, right? I was raised over there, I pretty much got my first job there. And it's the building that would be, use your builders, use your builders, the way they build is beautiful work. Make it little homes, you know, for now, and make your bed money. I'm just suggesting, I'm not saying it, but I'm also know, I know Bellflower's not going to be too fond of an idea of others referrals coming in from other counties. I really know that, okay? I'm not sticking up, I don't have a home, why should I care? I do care, because I love Bellflower, it's a friendly city no matter what. And if you could do that, just, it's perfect. And it's also when they're in programs, they can make room for them. We need to keep our cities safe. We can't enter, I left, I left when I saw that I had to eat breakfast right after that, the dude died.
Mr. Hardesty, I think we have an answer.
No, I'm just letting you know.
I think we have an answer, I think we have an answer for you, though.
It's the truth. So on behalf, on behalf of what I see now.
So what your suggestion is a Kmart building, right?
Help me, please, I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm sorry, Kmart is, Rosecrans, you have it for lease next to the Chinese restaurant before it goes over the riverbed.
Okay.
It's pretty much out of sight, that's just my idea.
Alright, okay, thank you for your idea.
They don't have to listen to it. I know it's a big building, but it's paid money, and it voted for it, they want the help. It should go into that favor, not listening to Orange County's idea and come over here and say that we can't do it ourselves. That's all, you guys are smart, motivate our city to do it and make our own money. If not, President Trump, he not playing around. If we don't get it done, he will make his money.
Alright, Darrell, thank you so much for your suggestion, okay? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if I, may I just, Randy, can I ask you a favor?
I'm sorry, but it's the truth, if we don't do it, these people are going to die soon, and it's cold. I will not, I will be your peacemaker with them, okay?
First of all, tell them that we appreciate that offer, please, and then second, can you share with?
I'm here to help you and be with you guys.
Can you share with them that this facility is only going to be for Bill Florence?
I will be here every meeting, and my legal aid, I don't want to get him that. So they're going to help me with legal matters too, because my hearing, you know, my head, I just, it hurts.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, tell them that he did well. Thank you so much, Darrell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anything else?
Just a general comment to the public that, one of the vital things that the mayor said and was said before is that, this is really important, and the reason is we need to get this facility up and running fast. And so, in order to do that, we need this, for us to be able to comply, and to be able to help people, and to be able to get them in this facility as soon as possible. We have weather that's coming up here in the next month and a half that's going to be pretty bad, and so the sooner we get this done, the better. It's been done already, we've had facilities in Orange County that have been, from literally the ground up, and they were up and running within fifteen days and within twenty-eight days, so it's possible. But we need to do this in order to be able to get this done, so, that was it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, alright.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dutton.
I'd like to answer the, since, I know Randy's working with him right now to let him know what the idea is, but this is not for any outside transient population to come to our town. This temporary shelter site is designed for temporary use of Bellflower-connected people. So there's already been an inventory of transient population, and the Bellflower ones that are connected have been already determined. And any future ones would have to have that connection too. So we're not going to be having other transient population people shipped into Bellflower. So I wanted to be clear on that, that this settlement is set aside just to do this just for the city of Bellflowers homeless population.
And can I piggyback on what you just said, just right quick?
Yep.
We've already had cities that are surrounding us that have shown an interest in potentially buying beds in our facility. We're not interested, so this is for Bellflower, so, thank you, thank you, Councilmember, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And also, just a point of clarification, because somebody questioned the number of homeless that we have identified of seventy and then fifty beds, and they're kind of misinformed that we're not taking care of all the homeless in the area. It's just, again, is the Bellflower, there's connection with Bellflower for this homeless population. So I just want to make sure that it's clear, they have to have connection with Bellflower. That's why the number is lower than what we had advertised it for in terms of the homeless count in the city of Bellflower, because most of them had no connection with the city. Alright, any other comments?
I'm ready for a motion.
I'm ready, Mr. Coops.
To adopt resolution number nineteen dash eighty-two, declaration of emergency to implement the court order filed September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen in Orange County Catholic Worker at All versus Orange County at All, a resolution adopted pursuant to Bellflower Municipal Code BMC, Chapter two point two zero, and Public Contracts Code two zero one six eight, finding that a local emergency exists within the city and authorizing contracting without the need for bidding pursuant to two two zero five zero and Municipal Code three point two eight point zero seven O D, and finding that the temporary shelter project is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act as an emergency project. And I would add what the mayor suggested as to a funding needs to be determined and shown where it's coming from, where it's going.
Second.
And how about number two? Authorized funding? He said?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's actually included within the resolution, so.
Oh, it's included, okay.
That was all of it.
Okay, because I thought that he read the whole thing.
I'm out of breath.
Okay, alright, very good. So much clearer, it's part of the resolution. Alright, a motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Hamada, for the City Council to adopt resolution nineteen dash eighty-two. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Garza.
Hi.
Councilmember Dutton.
Hi.
Councilmember Hamada.
Hi.
Councilmember Coops.
Hi.
Mayor Santenaz.
Hi. Okay, consult calendar. Anyone who would like to pull an item? Or recusals?
Mayor, I have a recusal, as usual. I would like to recuse myself from fourteen F, fourteen I, and fourteen K due to property conflicts.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have the same situation. Fourteen F.
Fourteen F?
I have property conflicts within the planned boundary.
Okay. Anyone who'd like to pull an item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from item fourteen L due to a client conflict relationship.
Okay, fourteen L? Okay, Councilmember Hamada?
I'm good.
Very good.
Let's move on it.
Mr. Gregor, okay, I'd like to pull fourteen, item fourteen I. Okay, Councilmember Dutton has to be recused on fourteen I. Sorry, is it going to be short?
Forgot already.
I know. Mr. Gregor, I, just a question for you. Your department has been doing a lot of work in the city, and I appreciate that. I think we appreciate that on behalf of the city council and our residents. And I've been getting good comments, especially on Bellflower and Artesia. And it's quite surprising with the amount of work being done on Alondra and Eucalyptus. I haven't heard any complaint about traffic. In fact, I've heard something positive.
That's good.
Because they can see what's going on, and they can appreciate what's going to happen to the sidewalk. So with this item before us, fourteen I, you're proposing that there's going to be more improvements in the city. So I just want to kind of have you walk through the city council and our audience here, what you're planning on doing, because I know this is something that's good. Especially, I've been getting complaints before, particularly on Artesia and Ardmore. in particularly on Artesia and Ardmore because of the dip, uh, in that area. So can you walk us through in terms of what improvements are, are your plan and timing wise? And then also, you've done, you've done a magnificent, a magnificent job in terms of notifying our residents, especially for those reader boards. I think those are very helpful. So can you walk us through?
Yeah, uh, certainly, uh, mayor and councilmembers. Uh, for this project, uh, this is just our cold mill resurface project. It's, um, uh, our annual way of taking some of our, um, uh, some of the gas tax dollars and the measure R dollars and going through the, uh, the streets, um, kind of our, our local streets, what, what we would not consider to be arterials or anything to that fact. Um, so this is just a, a quick map showing you where the locations will be this time. Now, um, historically, we base the streets that we're going to, um, do based on what they call PCI index. And it's, for lack of a better term, it's a report card for the streets. Um, and we, every five to seven years, we have a consultant that comes in. They go up and down every square inch of all of our streets and they perform a, a rating system on them. So when it comes time to do projects like this, so we're not focusing on one neighborhood or one part of town, we typically go by the ones that are rated the worst for us and our PCI indexes and stuff. So in this case, or, or we're also trying to finish off a section of street that we didn't complete the year before. So the areas that we're focusing on this upcoming year will be Beverly Street, um, from the, basically the Golden Corral all the way through over to Bixby.
And by the way, if we can go back this, real quick, want to point out, th- this is where the Rotonda is, right?
Yes, that's, it's an old, these, these aerials are a little older, um, but yes, that's, that's where it's at. Uh, this would be Artis. Uh, this section of Artis would run from the Service Road up near Foster all the way down to Rosecrans. And it, just for the, I guess the sake of conversation here, uh, we're looking at a PCI rating of thirty-two, anywhere from thirty-two to forty on this section of Artis. Now, in the, in the world of asphalt, uh, anything below sixty is considered poor. Anything below forty is considered very poor, so this section of Artis is in the very poor region. Uh, we have Main Street, uh, this would be from west of Lakewood Boulevard to the dead end at the, um, the L A D W P right away. Uh, what would be the far, uh, west end, uh, city boundary. Uh, we have Santa Ana Street, uh, this is north of Floravista, just west of Clark Avenue. That's a section that we'll be doing as well. Uh, we have Park Street, uh, Park's actually in, um, decent shape. However, we're, we stopped short last year or two years ago on Park Street. So we're doing the last block of Park Street there to get through that one. And then we have the, uh, the, the long, the long-term, you know, slow to near stop before you hit it, um, dips at Artesia and Ardmore. Uh, to, really what needs to go on here is those cross gutters need to be removed. But the funding to do that and install storm drains far exceeds what we can allocate out for these kind of projects. So what we're doing here is we're actually going to peel the street back, uh, probably close to a good hundred, hundred and fifty feet each direction and work on gradually reshaping the slope of the street leading to that intersection, which will take out the big, um, thumps that you have when people go through too fast in their cars, so.
So that will be a major improvement on that intersection?
Correct, yeah. Ultimately, if I, you know, if I had a wish list, I'd, I'd put storm drains underneath the street there. So we wouldn't have to have those concrete cross gutters. But, um, you're probably talking the price tag just for that alone in excess of a million dollars right there. And we just don't have it and without spreading, uh, the, the funds to the other parts of town here.
So, so the dip's going to be more gradual?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's good. Because I, I was getting a lot of complaints about that and I was telling them that, hold up, we're doing something about it. So finally, it's coming.
Yeah, they, I mean, the asphalt right there speaks for itself.
I know, that's good.
It gets hammered pretty hard. And, and that's it. Those are the locations that we're doing with this year's allocation of, of money for the, for our local streets overlay.
Okay, and then as I mentioned earlier, are you going to be continuing to use those reader boards, um?
Yes, that's, um, you know, that's something that we started doing a, a couple of years ago. When it, when it comes to just doing roadwork, uh, it's the best way forward. You include it as part of the, the, um, the RFP package, uh, when you're sending it out, that you make the contractors pay, uh, for the reader boards. Yeah, ultimately, they just include it in as part of their bid price, but they're very important. They get the, they, you know, they, they notify the public as to what's going on. Uh, the, the problem is, is kind of like when we ran into over here on Bellflower, when the, when the construction drags on and it gets outside the limits of the original date you posed, people start thinking you're not doing your job. But you just got to go back in and reprogram them.
But I can tell you again that, um, those reader boards are very effective. Because it notifies the motorists, they know what to expect, they know what's going to happen, so.
Not everybody goes and reads the budget and sees what our projects are for the year, but everybody definitely sees the reader boards when they drive by it every day. So it's a great way to get the message across to the public.
Okay, in terms of what's your, um, timetable for this?
Uh, this is award, uh, so we're awarding this project here. Um, so, excuse me, the.
Will it be one project at a time or all together at the same time or?
No, they'll, they'll be in town here for, there's, there's probably a ninety, ninety to a hundred and twenty working days on this project and stuff. So they'll come in, they'll work through each location and get it done.
Okay.
Um, we award tonight, uh, we probably have six to eight weeks of, uh, exchanging of, of contract documents, uh, their bid bonds, their insurance, doing our pre-construction meeting and then actually finding when the contractor is available to begin the project. So typically from award, I tell everybody, we're about eight weeks out before, you know, two months before we actually start the project.
Wonderful, alright, thank you so much.
Yep.
Any question of Mr. Gureki? Nope, alright, thank you. No, 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 it's this. No, sorry about that, just for information. Alright, um, so for the consent calendar, we have recusals from, um, councilmember Garza on fourteen L, for councilmember Dutton, item fourteen F, fourteen I, and fourteen K. And, uh, councilmember Coops for item fourteen F.
Move the consent calendar.
Second, and note that there was a, there was an amendment on the minutes, fourteen, item fourteen, fourteen D, yeah.
Okay. Uh, motion by councilmember Coop, seconded by councilmember Hamada to adopt the, um, consent calendar with a correction on item fourteen D on the minutes. Roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Garza.
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz.
Aye. Okay, council reports. Mayor Pro Tim Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, just a couple of things. Um, I want to start off by sending well wishes to, um, the mayor of our neighboring city in Downey. Um, he's had some health issues lately, uh, we're all close to him. Um, he's a great human being, great gentleman, um, and, uh, he's doing much better now. Uh, it's good to see him out of the hospital, so I just wanted to, um, just convey, uh, well wishes to him, continued well wishes. Uh, I wanted to commend you and our staff for a fantastic state of the city, uh, on October thirty, they did a great job, so thank you for that. I also want to commend you and, um, the Bellflower Ministry, Ministerial Association as well as the whole community for supporting the mayor's prayer breakfast. A couple of days after that, uh, again, great event over at the main. Um, I also participated on October ten, um, along with yourself and I think councilmember Hamada on the coffee with a firefighter. Um, great event at Steel Craft, so to all the organizers of that event and all the participants, um, just thank you. It was a really nice event, especially seeing the youth interacting with our, our fire personnel. And then lastly, um, uh, a lot of pride with this one. So I've been, um, I didn't even know I was being considered for something, but apparently I was selected to be a member of a panel that's going to be reporting on the fiscal conditions of cities throughout our country. Um, on this panel, it's going to be the director of all cities in the state of Michigan, the budget director of the city of New York, and me. I'm not sure how I got on this thing, but I'm truly blessed and honored to represent our city on this, uh, our state as well. Uh, that's going to take place on Monday, October twenty-eighth in Washington DC. Uh, it's being sponsored and hosted by the National League of Cities. Um, and, uh, because of that, I will not be here at our next council meeting, so that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Will miss you.
I will miss you all as well.
Uh, councilmember Dunn.
I would just like to say that the, the mayor did an excellent job with the state of the city address and very informative. And he's also had a great mayor's prayer, prayer breakfast, kudos to him. Anybody that missed it, they'll miss the state of the city anyway, you can see that on the internet, on the website. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Hamada?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Try to sort through my busy last few weeks. Uh, I will keep it down. Uh, but, uh, maybe, uh, I'll, I'll just highlight some of the, but again, echo the, uh, comments from, uh, uh, Mr. Dutton about the state of the city and the mayor's, uh, again, prayer breakfast, uh, just awesome event. Um, uh, I, I attended, um, Metro's, uh, let's see, I one oh five express lanes project. Uh, it was, it was out in Linwood and, um, uh, again, you know, what's coming down is Metro's looking at changing the HOV lanes on, on the one oh five to possibly, well, one option is to turn them into two express lanes. So, and with express lanes, there are charges, you know, so. And if that happens, then, you know, sometime, uh, that traffic may divert onto local streets. So again, the environmental process is still being, uh, worked on, so, uh, there's more to come. And I've, I've, I've mentioned the staff and then so staff will be watching it also. I, um, I, I attended the final performance of the YCAF, um, here and, uh, they did a great job and, uh, they had a lot of talent and, uh, just the kids, uh, and, and the entries, uh, you know, again, performed really well and so, uh, hopefully, I think, uh, the founders will be stopping by at a future, uh, uh, meeting to be thanked, so. Uh, last week I attended a LASSA event, uh, it was out in Norwalk. Uh, each spa was supposed to feature some kind of event related to homeless and, uh, um, look at, they showed a documentary of the spa area. And so, um, uh, the film producer was there and, uh, but, uh, uh, they showed, uh, you know, how, um, there's a, just a score of activities that are happening throughout to, to address the homeless and to, uh, deal with and serve them and, uh, so on. So, uh, it was, uh, it was, uh, motivating, uh, I look at expiring. And, uh, there, uh, everybody is again stepping up and, and working hard on this issue. I, uh, uh, it's been, uh, oh, uh, no, my final one, uh, I, I was, I, I had a chance to, uh, again, visit the Bellflower looking, uh, good area, so the final, uh, uh, area this year. So, uh, it was in the north part of town. Again, again, all the residents are very positive about the opportunity to have a free yard sale one, one Saturday and then, and dump whatever they couldn't sell in the bins the next, uh, Saturday. And, uh, some of the bins filled so fast apparently, you know, they, they had to really turn them over, so. Uh, people do take advantage of it and they are very thankful for it. Um, and, uh, recently I, I also, um, attended, um, a Solaco event, uh, and, uh, it was a, um, it was, it was a business resource, uh, symposium. And, uh, so there's a lot of, a lot of, uh, uh, good vendors there. And I was, I had a chance to talk to some state people there and, uh, working with economic development and, and small business. And, uh, again, they have opportunities for a small business to talk to them as a resource too. So, uh, hopefully the small business also will take advantage of that, so. Uh, again, it was busy, but I'll leave it at that, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Coops?
It, it's difficult for me to admit that, uh, your state of the city was better than mine, but it, it truly was. I mean, you should host a TV show. But it was exceptional. I mean, he didn't stutter once, he knew everything about every picture. Uh, lucky for you, uh, staff bailed you out on the, uh, automatic control and that went well. In fact, I think it went better, you not, you could concentrate on the script and not have to really push the button, so. Yeah, you had to be there, but it was flawless. So proud of, uh, what our city is doing and what, how it was presented on that, uh, morning. Prayer breakfast is in, indicated, uh, had a diverse amount of pastors from the Bellflower Ministerial Association. And they always do a good job of, uh, showing us what God's doing in our city. And, uh, I guess I should ask, one of the things that's, uh, we've talked about earlier and Robin brought it forward, is the excitement's building, uh, not unlike what it did for our In-N-Out Burger with the Dunkin' Donuts deal. And I was under the impression that when the power got on, they're ready to rock and roll. Now, Jim, if you could let me know, the power's on apparently. And, but I read in the report that they're training their people in Downey to make sure they can operate correctly. Am I getting this right? Mr. De Longa in the house?
Please come up, Jim.
Yeah, yeah, which Jim is it? So it's Jim, the donut guy.
Yes, that's correct, and they anticipate opening on the twenty-second.
The twenty-second of October, they're going to be staffed, they're going to have dough, they're going to have donuts, they're going to have sugar, they're going to have coffee, everything you'd ever want to buy at a Dunkin' Donuts.
That's what we're told.
Oh, well, you did.
Okay. That's the caveat, right?
Alright, we'll hope for the best, uh, but the power is on, which was a real concern before. Alright, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Coops. Uh, I just have a few items to, to report to you. Um, on September twenty-fourth, we had this, we had the second meeting for the, um, south, um, south end of the, um, um, bid, which is the, um, uh, business improvement district. Uh, councilmember, um, Hamada and I attended that meeting. It was a good turnout and I think, um, the, the business owners, property owners, uh, south of, south of the freeway are very enthusiastic of building or forming a, uh, business improvement district. Also, um, on the twenty-eighth of September, we attended the car show. Thanks again to the Lions Club for hosting the car show, uh, good turnout. And, uh, I, I just want to piggyback on the state of the city. Uh, I was just basically the storyteller. The staff of the city gave me good stories to share. That's all I can say. Uh, without good stories, I could not be a good storyteller. Um, the following day, I was honored to, um, to attend the Kiwanis Club, uh, to, to report on, on the settlement agreement. Uh, it was a, uh, I've been attending the Kiwanis meetings, um, every now and then, but this was my first meeting, uh, of the first meeting of the new president, so it was kind of rowdy, so to speak. So it was an eye-opener for me, okay? No, you know, no, it wasn't, no, it wasn't. But it was a good experience and I'm glad to share, uh, information about settlement agreement.
And that's without alcohol.
Because it's lunchtime, right? And, uh, councilmember, uh, Hamada and I attended the, uh, the golf tournament dinner, not the golf, but dinner of the YMCA. I think they raised good money for, again, for sending kids to camp. Uh, for the mayor's prayer breakfast, I just want to piggyback on that comment and I want to thank particularly Pastor Eddie Gartley, uh, for hosting this event. He did a fantastic job on mobilizing, uh, the attendees, the speakers, they got good program. Uh, it, it was a, a good day to, it was a good time to start the day, uh, with prayer. And, uh, we also attended the joint service luncheon hosted by the Rotary Club. I want to talk more about the student art festival. It was very successful. It was held last Saturday. Uh, attended by third, we had thirty-three participants from different, um, Bellflower area schools. And, uh, there was, um, winner for the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. I, I thank the sponsors, uh, Mike Bressard, uh, Dante Valve Company and the Roadway Inn and Suites. And all the schools in Bellflower, uh, sent in participants in the competition, so it was well attended. Uh, and also we had the, um, demonstration by local artists. It's kind of amazing that, uh, Bellflower has a lot of local artists. We have six that, uh, that share their talent at the art show. Uh, it was a fantastic, uh, for fantastic morning. And, um, councilmember Hamada and I, uh, we are the twins, I think.
I just follow you, I just follow your lead, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, we attended the St. Bernard's Festival, uh, we miss you. It was a great, uh, great event. Uh, thank you for, for, um, sponsoring, um, the, the St. Bernard's Festival. And, and finally, um, I, I visited Beverly Monroe, you know, you know, you know her. Beverly Monroe is the, um, owner of, used to be the owner of Evelyn's Flowers. She celebrated her eighty-six, eighty-sixth birthday and, um, she wasn't feeling well, so I dropped by and, uh, had a chat with her and we had a good time. So with that, uh, we are adjourning this meeting of the Bellflower City Council, uh, to the next regular meeting at five thirty PM on Monday, October twenty-eighth, two. uh, to the next regular meeting at five thirty PM on Monday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. This meeting is now adjourned.
Nice meeting, eight thirty.